Okay, we're now live. We'll call this meeting to order. And we'll start with the pledge. I'm still doing the pledge, Ken. For this one, okay. Thank you. Alright, I know many of you are here tonight for the division of possible subdivision near your properties. Five oh three to five twenty-five South Main. Sandra Anderson is here tonight to talk about what she is intending to do with those properties. Um, and we will have a lot of discussions on what we will need from her. What we are asking of her, um, so that when she goes forward, she can go forward correctly. Um, so do you want to stand up and tell us a little bit about what your plan is to do with the subdivision?
Sure. You know, these are the brick houses that are up at the nursing home. Uh, they are my family property. And uh, since they were built, they have been rental properties. Um, usually it's the long-term people who usually stay there till they can't live on their own anymore. Um, we have recently uh, turned those into Airbnbs, um, to have a place to stay in town. Uh, there are currently, um, we're only looking at dividing one parcel, so on the one that we're talking about now. We have nine, well, four, five, six, seven, seven existing houses and then two more that we would add into those spaces just to, because we were recommended to have it all plotted at once if we were ever gonna divide it. Um, the idea here was honestly, you know, we're trying to improve the land and make it, um, a place to get away and enjoy, um, for either people who want to live there or people who want to invest in the property as Airbnbs and run it as it existing is, that have a place that has a community center and a place to have, um, an art studio and we were planning on a small pond area. Um, the previous, um, city administration didn't tell me that was a problem, um, having a pond there. I just found that out tonight. But honestly, what we were trying to do was look at the property in the idea of how do we move forward? With making improvements and paying for them, you know, money has to come somewhere. And uh, we wanted to be able to give people the ownership ability. Um, if this is the place they would like to stay and retire at, or like I said, believe in the Airbnb part of it and wanna invest and be part of it. So, um, it is pretty much exactly how it's been ran for the past, I don't know, since it was built in the seventies. So, um, I'm happy to take any questions or issues with any surrounding people that think it's going to cause them heartache in some way.
Well, I'm kinda wondering about the roadway and how you plan on running the road back there?
Um, the existing driveway, we have two of them right here.
Right.
Currently, this, there is another outlet onto Vine that we do not currently use. And there is no plan to connect that right now. There is a plan in the future, if we added those lots back there, that we, we plan on wrapping the drive all the way around this anyway. But if for overflow or whatever regulations for the fire department or anyone else, that we needed to open up to a road if it's existing. Um, so currently, everything would still be ran through the current driveways.
So, in other words, how are, how big of driveways are we talking as far as the main one that you're pointing out?
This one's existing, already twenty.
Most of them used.
Yeah, and this already wraps around.
Right.
Right here.
Right. Because I own a corner house right on the other side. So.
Right here?
Right, right here. And I'm, I'm wondering what you're doing with this road as far as how wide?
I was taking it from the existing and going towards the south. And I was going to double wide that because the trucks have a really a problem getting out right there. So we were making it the same size as the front one.
Okay.
But the driveway costs a lot of money and, and we did that last year. And so we have to kinda regain before we can get to that side. We got to that there.
Yeah, I was just wondering how much.
Right.
How much you was planning on coming over into my property?
We are not. We're not going any, any wider than our norths than what's existing. Everything goes to the south, yeah.
Have you done a study on the waterways?
Um, I talked to the USDA when we talked about doing the pond. And they do have concerns that it's, it was more of a sand base from the glacier overflow, but uh, she said it shouldn't be a problem. We just may have to pack some extra clay in there. But there's a huge water problem in this whole area here from the nursing home. It sheds over into all the yards. So our plan is to dig a trough all the way around to divert that water into this pond area because everything floods over here and then onto our property. And then that's why we had to already build a road, a little ditchway to go around to the existing where it runs off into the property and then down into the creek by the railroad track.
I thought it was illegal to divert a waterway. And I have five waterways behind my house. One splits between Anderson's on one side and, uh, Carrington's on the other. And you can see it coming all the way out from County Market. And I don't want something put back there that's gonna put all that water in my base. And I don't think any of them speak for me.
Sorry, it's over.
So what I'm, what I'm thinking is, with, with this situation is, I've been looking through and such a we, we, I think, I think we all should take a trip out there and see what we're actually looking at as well. From what I think she's saying is it's gonna save you guys from having water in your base.
That's why we're trying to let, we're trying to be left throughout the county market. That's where it starts.
Our, our overflow, the main part of all of our overflow and what goes towards seventy-eight comes off the nursing home property.
But if you take care of that and move that, where's that water that's now coming from County Market going to go that splits between our houses? I don't want it in my basement.
What? I don't, I don't know what we're talking about.
Well, the next time it rains, you come to my house. And I can show you how it comes from County Market.
From County Market, from the nursing home, it all floods right between ours. My basement floods every time.
But I'm only taking water away from what would go in that direction. I wouldn't be adding any water.
Who designed this waterway and what company did you have, Mount Shu Graves and stuff? Or did you just go out there and go, "I'm gonna bring water down this way"?
You know exactly who I had do that. And he is Barry.
Barry, Barry's, yeah, he's an operator. Last I knew, he, he wasn't an engineer to engineer where water runs and how it goes running. So what, he's an operator. You put flags out there, he goes after his polo and starts digging.
I didn't change anything where that water went inside, just wrapping it around so it didn't go through the buildings. It was exactly water that was there.
It's not going through your buildings now, so it has to go somewhere. It has to go in that water. Or it goes in the pond.
It is burned up around your property.
I know it had blacktop and concrete waste.
We tried to, let's please remain respectful, please.
She, she came in and built a burn behind my house, so I couldn't mow her weeds back.
So you would.
And she put, she put chunks of concrete and blacktop and everything else to dam up, so I couldn't get back there to mow the weeds. Now I got thick weeds growing up. She got dirt pile up there with fourteen, I mean, it's probably what, thirty foot there? Weeds. I didn't, I, I worked hard on my yard. And you come in and did it. And I see you know it's true. You mowed it how many times this year? Once. You didn't mow the whole thing. You just let it go.
And whatever you do there is not gonna affect your house. You don't live there. We do.
We do.
I'm not, I'm against it.
You don't think I've made an improvement to that plan?
No.
I don't, and I don't care what you do.
You may have improved it to your property, yes, but not ours. Our, our, our property values are going down.
This is like.
So, so, so we, so we get somebody else to actually come do the survey? Would that be, would that be better for everybody else that's here?
Well, I want a competent professional to tell me, yes, this is where the water's going, this is where the water. And if it's through my yard and a professional tells me it's through my yard, I'm gonna believe you. I'm not gonna believe her. I'm gonna believe the professional that does our living as a survey.
I understand.
I mean, I'm not an actual one.
No, with Chad, with Chad, um, if thinking with Chad. Um, according to our ordinances, yes, it has to be zone conservation to have water under property. But maybe if there is a possibility that it will take out flooding from your area, flooding from your area, we have an engineer comes in and that is.
I can live with that.
Yes, we have an engineer come in, do a study and say, hey, this is gonna eliminate everything from this area or this area, or they will say, no, don't do this at all. Maybe we can do an ordinance that says this will help divert the waterway. Would that be an option for people?
Who's going to pay for that? Is the city going to pay for that?
No.
Sandra's going to pay for it?
If that's what she wants to do. If she wants to go ahead with this project, this is her project.
So is that doable for you, Sandra?
So, um, you had already just said, I, that being off the table, I mean, some, some property lines aren't contingent upon the water feature out there.
But if we can do a small pond and help with the water table completely in town and an engineer comes in and says that.
I can't afford all of that to be able to give us approval.
But that's what we're going to need. If you want a pond there. But if you want waterway there, these are things that we're gonna have to do. That's why we have to start these discussions. So if you know that you can't afford the, the lake, the waterway, the engineering for it, then that's gonna have to go off the table. Um, so these are things that we wanna bring to the table just to tell you, yes, you can go ahead and proceed with this. No, don't. Or what we need from you to start negotiations?
I also have a question. You want to sell part of these lots to other people to invest in? Is that what you said?
For people who want to build this town as a small town getaway? And if, if that's the direction it keeps going and they want.
So you want to sell it to other people? Is that what you're telling me? You want to develop it and then sell that to other people?
So kind of like a goose range type of deal where, is that kind of life?
You maintain ownership of the whole area.
Well, they would have individual plotted lots and then the main area would still be owned by us.
They would have individual lots, but would those lots be owned by them or by you?
So then the whole area would be owned by you?
Everything within the perimeter of pinned lot would be owned by them.
So then you would take care of all of their land, any other.
Lot line, so every, that's the whole.
Any sewer.
So they don't have to mow, they don't have to throw stone.
Roadwork.
All of that.
Things like that. Um, is it like, so HOA, so it'd be a private subdivision?
Bill and the county said that was up to us if we had to do an HOA or if we decided not to.
What are your?
There's just covenances that were gonna be wrote.
Okay.
You can't maintain behind cities. What makes you think you can maintain that whole area?
Are you serious?
Yes.
I'm also trying, I just opened a coffee shop and I'm trying to do another.
I paid you for that. I think that's one of the.
Hard and I'm just trying to make future plans of how to make it all work. You gotta give a little slack in to be able to breathe and have money to do this stuff.
I would give you some slack.
I would pay.
But it is my house that will be flooded, not yours. You don't seem to understand. And I don't know who's going to maintain that and not be a weak ass.
Guys, this isn't gonna happen tomorrow. They still have a lot of questions.
Susan, what's your question? Yes, Susan, what's your question?
Okay, I'll send you mine. Well, I got the.
She'll send you straight.
Same, same here. But to address the water injury that was caused by the putting the nursing home in, that we had no idea until after we bought her home that this even was a problem. You do realize that they put drains in. We all have drains in our backyards, including the apartments have drain. So we all have to keep an eye on this drain because if you don't keep an eye on the drain and there's debris on it, then we all get flooded. And if your neighbor isn't keeping an eye on their drain, we all get flooded. So, and you know, your sister lived next to us. They should have put another drain in between these two houses because every time it rains, we get a lake there. So, something's gotta be done, but it worries me because if, if the nursing home caused all these houses on South Main that butt up to this land, the grade is that bad that it floods all, and I mean floods. It floods all our yards. Then this moving grade again to the back of all of our yards, it's not gonna help. It's gonna hurt.
To Sandra, have you, have you talked to the nursing home at all about what, if you're working with them and seeing if they will do anything with their part of the property?
Um, I told them when they had a contractor come in and do a fence and they ripped out a whole bunch of stuff and piled up debris and put the drains, the, all the gutter drains piped out to our property. I'm like, I see you did that. It's a problem. It's all a problem for all of us that it comes through all of our property.
Okay.
We, we have plans to do more stuff on the property, so in the future, it's, it's gonna be a problem, but just wanna let you know it. We know what's happened.
So that's what I mean. If you're gonna bother this grade again, that's a concern because we're already.
I, I think that that's where we get the engineer involved that would say, yes, it could help this flooding or no, it's not gonna matter either way. That be a good answer, a professional engineer license that develops ponds, lakes, things like that and just waterways.
Where the water's going.
Yeah, yeah. And see if it would help. I think that that's reasonable. Um, and if it is going to be very helpful and then eliminate your issues, we can bring it back to the table.
Isn't it illegal to divert waterways, natural waterways?
Yeah, exactly. It has to be done properly. Yeah, it has to be done by. Right. Yeah.
It's part of the Illinois drinking law. I mean, you'd have to, like you say, engineer it. You'd have to shoot it. See where all the existing, you know, look at the old plat maps. I mean, that's kinda where you start. And then you'd have to address if there is, if there is or was changes at the nursing home versus, you know, your property and your neighbor's property.
I start there.
You can't. Yeah, you can't just arbitrarily move water from point A to point B. It has to go the way it went naturally unless it's engineered to be changed. And that's true, like I say.
I was never.
Professional. Well, well, clearly, but you would need to be informed of the processes, all of it, absolutely, every bit of it. Whether or not if this is a project that you want to continue with, if this is a passion of yours and you want to make this happen.
So it's just city property, then, I mean, it's nip within the city limits?
Yes, it's within limits.
Well, what, what would they have sewers accommodate? Our sewer fills up now, the water line. Are all those sewers going to go where?
That's in those mains or seventy-eight.
They are going to seventy-eight for sure.
All of that goes through the main driveway right down the center, connects to seventy-eight.
That's the new ones too. And two of them close to bill.
Yeah.
You're gonna section those off into four sections? What size lots will they be and will they be restricted on the type of housing that you're building there? Will it be like little foreign shacks or will it be nice houses?
I've been inside of one and I always see they're beautiful.
What's that, your her houses?
One of, one of those, yeah. Yeah, very nice.
But I'm just saying, trailers or, I mean, is there gonna be some type of code that, that decides the lots?
And that's what we're here to discuss.
Ordinances that tell what kind of homes can go on all lots? And trailers, if it has a vent, it is not allowed. That's vehicle identification number.
Well, I know, I just don't wanna punch a trailer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just went to the court again today. He's, he's in addiction. He's been avoiding it. We have been trying to get him out since next. Well, we come down those. Been trying. Ask the police. I have been trying.
Because we've been watching him bring bag into bag in that trailer. And what's your first thought? Meth lab. But since we haven't gone food yet, I guess we can hold that out.
Okay, alright. There you go. So we're gonna table this. And.
Anyway, you could put a sign out there on Main Street to tell them where the Airbnb is.
Yeah.
We've had like.
That's our other issue.
Four, four people going on a drive one time.
It's Google Maps.
We was at work. Glad to send the cops out to see what was going on. They ran up on the garage.
And, and I would definitely put a lock. Yes.
Okay, so, um, is, are you still wanting to do a pond? Then you have answers to the pond, right? Okay, so we all know a little bit more about information that we're going to need. Measurements, um, that you wanna zero set by?
I will not be investing in the pond plans before the idea that any of these homes could be sold because money has to come from somewhere.
Correct, correct.
And that does not just drop out of the tree.
I agree.
And so if that is gonna stop this whole thing, let it be.
Okay, but are you still wanting to develop the homes into their own PIN numbers?
Yes.
And do your own subdivision?
Option without investing in all of the engineering to do a later part of it.
Okay, so, right now, what you're planning on doing is the number one, two, three, four, five, six, seven that have homes.
Only go through number nine.
Okay.
Eight and nine are both just empty ground right now.
Okay.
Those would be the ones that would directly connect into utilities the most easily. And they're not the extended lots that would need more drives and curves and all of that at a later day.
Okay, and right now you have like long-term renters in there?
I.
Okay, and would they be open to buy?
One of them, yes, they are.
Okay, and then, um, if the others aren't, what are your plans?
Um, either talk to investors or put them up. There are people who wanna buy them as their home.
Put them for sale, okay? And then what, they just say, stay vacant for a long time?
They will, they will run them and I'll run them exactly as they are right now, either as rental spaces or Airbnbs that are self-sustaining.
Okay.
This is just an option for people to own their own home or own part of an improvement in town that they want. Leave it.
Okay.
So houses first, lake, lake and everything is way afterwards.
Yeah.
Nothing to do with it right now.
Are you building the same sized house as you have the other brick ones?
That is the plan. There are two different sizes there, but in my plan, that's where they would be.
How do you feel, how do you not think this is gonna ruin our property value? I mean, if you ask most of us that live on that side of South Main, the reason we bought our home is because the sanctuary, sanctuary of our backyards.
Yep, yep.
And so now.
It's Ryan. I, I'm not even touching those fields that are your backyard. Nothing is going to visually change at that property based on this division other than plotting out two vacant lots that right now are parking, additional parking area and grassland. Nothing else visually changes at all.
So this lot right back here.
I just said we wouldn't even be doing any of this.
That's my, that's my property.
So this is where?
So you're, you're only gonna access to seventy-eight.
Yeah, right there, all that.
And then you said someday of this.
Can I, can I ask residents around the area, since I, obviously I'm not from right there? Are those ditches right there, are those the diversion ways that we're talking about? Or are those just runs in the rough?
Those are my.
I just, I wasn't sure if like what. Sorry.
And then you said possibly even at a later date, you would possibly develop this. The water all but here and floods. This one?
Yep.
Here.
Right in the center and then goes over to hand.
All this water comes through here and comes right into here and right into.
Gotcha.
We called, we called the city to do something about buying, because the flood stopped at the big home. The city took all, probably six months ago. Blood's coming from all this water.
So what do you guys feel is so bad?
So this is the ditch you put in last year. So did water come from the back of the house, the back of the house?
Well, it used to, it used to. From out that quarter, she put a grade ditch all the way back. Listen, that's like, so this, so. Yeah, that was. So that means all the guy. So.
Okay.
And see what he said. I think would you.
They're, they're.
I mean, the turkey's just much more than that.
Yeah.
You don't believe how somebody admitting you go.
And then, and then.
We're not believing on the bomb. No, no, I'm bomb. Do you have to put a bomb there? Even if you put a pond in. So.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, now, if this water level high, for these. I, well, I know. Uh, when you have really full feet, like, no full of your yard, and you're what they expect, it's just. I, I totally understand. Their goal is.
Okay, so I, we've talked, um, we've came up with a few decisions. Um, we would like to table this. Um, we would like to get together as a council, all of us, um, and kinda ask a few more things. Um, we would like to do a site visit with an engineer. We're also a little concerned about the financial stability if this does go. Kind of like if you were to buy a franchise of a business, you have to prove financials. So a lot of things are concerned, um, and we do kinda wanna talk to the lawyer. The setbacks, the, um, en- enough room for a fire truck to get back there. So we do also want to make sure that with the fire department, that maybe they come to this meeting and they will give concerns as well. Is that agreeable as a group? Did I forget anything that we've all discussed? Okay, okay, so we will table this, we'll schedule another meeting, we'll schedule a site visit, I mean, does that sound okay?
Can, can I ask one more question on the Airbnbs? And it might not be to the whole thing, or do you plan on renovating those more, or are they gonna be as they are?
We plan on doing more renovations. I mean, we've, we have been cleaning that property since we bought it in twenty eighteen, and it's been a long process, there was a lot of stuff on that property. So everything takes a long time, and the interiors of most of those have been remodeled, and that has to come first.
That's, that's okay.
But Gina, do we have your assurance that this won't be pushed through without another vote with the public?
Assured, assured, once, yes, go ahead.
The planning commission makes recommendations to the city council. The city council makes the final vote on this.
We get, we get same, and that this, this will just gonna goes to a city council, I believe.
So will, you know, when it's at the city council?
Yes. I gotta admit, she has done a lot of work back there cleaning stuff up since we've lived there.
And, and when people come to town, it is nice to have a Airbnb to stay. I know that she runs them a lot every night.
They think it's your house.
Agreed, agreed, understand. And you know, maybe we can, we'll find middle ground for that, and you know, if she don't have cute little sign out, like, front of the, the roadway or something, um, and, and understand that we can walk from that town. And I understand strangers coming up to grass at nighttime might be a little sketchy, so.
You said you were gonna use the road to go out to seventy-eight, keep that road, is that correct?
These two roads, this road.
The, the already existing ones?
Yeah, the already existing ones. Yeah. And she's gonna kinda connect them, so that'll be like a C shape or a U shape, right? Right, but they will become roads if it becomes a subdivision. That's if we, that's part of our subdivision. Yeah. Yeah.
But it's just, you know.
Some of this right here is what she's wanting to kind of.
Now we're gonna be adding.
In the future, you're going to put the road through.
That's a.
And it already has that.
It is.
Right through there, that is directly across from Vine. That the police and fire department and all of that already have legal use of if they ever needed it to, that would connect straight to it.
Connect Vine?
Right.
Straight through.
Just, that's, that's never been used, but there was always, there, the pin wraps.
Let me get mine, do this right here, right? Connect Vine Street.
And it just keeps going straight out to seventy-eight. We have no plans on doing that right now, it was just.
It's a future, it's a possibility, it's a potential, it's a maybe.
I drove down that road, because I heard it went down.
And.
There's an eighteen D bump on right at the center of the road.
Okay, and it looks like his. Yeah.
The road goes to that, it's just all grown already, nobody has used it.
There's no right, there's no city right away.
There's no road show. No, there's just legal easements to get.
So that it would be, since it would be a prior subdivision. Okay, so we have a lot of questions, we've gathered a lot of your information. If anyone else has any further questions, concerns, my email's on the website, so please send me an email if you think of anything later. We're going to table this, we, thank you. We are going to meet together as a group and meet with an engineer, meet Sandra, and discuss possibilities. Maybe we can resolve the water problem for everyone. Maybe it won't, but we will have a lot more educated answers when we come back to this, and everyone will be notified. Everyone's agreed upon that, correct? Okay, alright, now we're gonna move on to, if I can do it from here, there we go, um.
That's all we have.
That's all we have tonight, okay.
The other three items that were on tap from this have been resolved.
There's no way.
There will be no rezoning of the property.
Okay. What about this, what about the devolving of the street?
That's up to the city council.
And that will be next month?
Yes. I have a question. What's the, like, not the big deal, but the street like? Is that like a personal thing, that people don't wanna live up?
That's what I'm asking, so, um, Amaranth Hall, we said the lights burn out, there's usually a light there, so to me, I don't live there. Do you guys wanna light there? It's up to you, it's, are you Mrs. Williams?
It will shine, if they take out that back hole and put it where the transformer is, it will shine in the bed.
And she does not want that, so no light, okay. And that's why I wanna ask, because I don't live there and I don't deal with it, so. And then sometimes it's a safety thing and people would prefer, so. Right, so that's why I wanted to ask, and, because like I said, I don't live there, it's your decision.
Is, is it illegal to have different colors? Because I mean, if you have different colors for the light down there?
They do, I can talk with, um, with Michael Clausen, he's our Amaranth person, and we can go from there. Okay, okay, and before we do anything, before it's yes or no, I will talk with you. And if I bring Amaranth over and we discuss it, I'll make sure it's okay with you, because like I said, I understand that this is your, this is where you live, like, I don't live there, it's your light, it's your safety, it's your whatever you need, so I just want your permission. Alright, so I guess that is the end of our meeting, and like I said, please, if you have any questions, um, if it's concerns about anything, just email, let me know, alright, we're adjourned.